All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 8th, Twolton City Council Work Session. We've got two items on the agenda plus our roundtable at the end. So first up is land use 101, which I believe is going to be tag team between Steve, Aaron, and Sean.
That's right.
All right. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, members of the city council. I'm Steve Cooper, the Assistant Community Development Director. And co-presenting with me tonight are Aaron Engman, Associate Planner, and of course, your city attorney, Sean Brady. And if he'll give us just a moment, we'll get our presentation queued up. Thanks, Aaron. So as the mayor mentioned, this is a presentation on development 101, the land use process. We're going to have three distinct sections. I'll start off with the a little bit of history of land use and zoning kind of in general, and then specific to Twolton. Aaron will walk you all through when is the land use process required in Twolton? And then Sean will finish up with a little bit of information about land use hearings and kind of what happens with land use when it gets to you as a council. Next slide, please. Why we zone? What is zoning? So zoning is the demarcation of an area to that then is has differential regulations established to regulate the uses within those zones. Kind of interesting, the word zone, actually, the Latin root is zona, which means girdle or encircle. And so some of you that know your ancient history probably know that most cities in the medieval times were walled cities. And so that was actually one of the first types of zoning where they would build a wall around the city and that the compatible uses within the walls of the city would be in there. And then kind of the noisy or smelly or otherwise incompatible uses would go outside of the wall. And so that was kind of the first first version of zoning. Now we obviously have it a little differently in Twolton and elsewhere. So again, that kind of gets into the next point of why we have it, which is to, it says on the slide, ensure public safety and avoid placement of incompatible uses next to each other. So I mean, essentially, it's the classic example of, you know, people don't want to live next to an industrial factory that belches out smoke. And of course, the lovely little cartoon illustrates that point. Next slide, please. So here is the zoning map in Twolton. So we've come a long way from zoning being instituted by walls of a city to we actually have zoning in a map-based form. And so in general, the kind of bluish hues of the zoning are industrial zones. The yellow tanish hues are residential. And then the pinkish and kind of purple hues are commercial zones. You'll notice the commercial zone kind of starts at the downtown core and kind of emanates out towards Bridgeport Village in the north. And then, of course, you have the industrial areas levitate into the north. And then the Twolton Sherwood Road Corridor kind of to the middle north of this zoning map. Next slide, please. And so a little bit of history of the Oregon land use history. So I think some of you may know the infamous Senate Bill 100 from 1973. It did a whole bunch of stuff. It set forth a really revolutionary land use statewide land use process that was at least at the time then unique. It set up a statewide land conservation and development commission. The LCDC oversees the State Department of Land Conservation and Development. It's essentially its board. And then along with that was the establishment of 19 statewide planning goals. And some of those goals are like, you know, goal one, citizen involvement. And you have goal goal five, which includes hazards and some natural resources and historic resources and a variety of different other ones. Those statewide planning goals are kind of the overall framework for other planning work. It kind of all starts from there and emanates down. And then a couple of other pieces of Senate Bill 100 and the following legislation was that cities and counties were required to have a comprehensive plan in which they had their own long-range planning policies that showed how they, as an individual city, complied with those overall statewide planning goals. And then lastly, urban growth boundaries were required to manage growth. And so, of course, in the Portland metropolitan area, we have one larger urban growth boundary, which is shared among the cities in the metro region. And then other cities outside of the Portland metropolitan urban growth boundary have their own urban growth boundaries. Like, say, a smaller place like Canby, for example, has its own urban growth boundary. That's not part of the metro, but they have their own. And then lastly, kind of in tandem with the establishment of Senate Bill 100 and the following legislation was the establishment of the metro regional government. And then following several different iterations of that regional government was the establishment of what's called the Urban Growth Management Functional Plan. And so really what that is, is that it's a plan that provides urban policies. And so you'll see everything on policies for, you know, things like concept planning. And so we went through that with the Salt Creek area. And so Metro has policies on nature in the neighborhoods, wetlands and other natural resources and a variety of different things. And so hierarchically, the metro policies kind of nest below the statewide planning goals and then above our comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. That brings us to our comprehensive plan. And so again, our comprehensive plan is essentially our locally controlled framework for how we both comply with the statewide and metro goals, which is important. But I think probably more importantly, it's an embodiment of the council and our community's viewpoint on how land use-related policies shape the future growth of the community. And so not just land use, but also you'll see later this evening, public infrastructure like stormwater, sewer, transportation, parks, and all sorts of other things are also part of that long-range policy guidance piece. Next slide, please. And then the last slide that I'll touch on, just as far as the planning overview history, et cetera, is the development code. And so the development code is the boots-on-the-ground embodiment of the comprehensive plan. So if a comprehensive plan policy were to encourage different types of housing in Twolton, then the development code would essentially pick one of those zones on the zoning map and then say, we're going to allow single-family detached and townhomes in this zone. And that's how we're going to achieve those policies. We're going to achieve our desire to have a mix of housing by allowing both types of housing. And so there's also, of course, a whole plethora of other, I guess, manifestations of policy in there. They get pretty micro-specific as far as how close should other buildings be to each other's setback. Particularly, I think of interest to the council is kind of what is and isn't allowed. And then probably the last piece is is just kind of providing guidance and criteria for approval of land use applications. And so that's the development code is what we go to to determine whether or not an application can be approved. And so, you know, in the event that you see something on appeal, those are the guiding principles that we go to in looking to make a recommendation to you. And so I'm just gonna, if you'd be so kind as to pop us out, Aaron.
Okay. Sorry, I'm having right now.
Thanks, Aaron. I just wanted to take a break so we could get back to seeing each other's faces for a moment, a little bit larger and just see if there's any questions about the history of land use in general or how it works in Twolton before we move on to the other parts of our presentation.
Questions for Steve? If not, I got a quick one. So going back to that last slide before we broke out, there was just been quite a discussion about, you know, updating our comprehensive plan and development code without, you know, spending a lot of time on it. You know, I look at other cities like Hillsboro and Sherwood with their comprehensive plans. I understand that development code is the specifics of implementation of your comprehensive plan. But how do you design a comprehensive plan that gives you a great deal of flexibility that that doesn't make you get super specific in development code? Is that possible, you know, thinking of, you know, we have a desire for a certain area of the city to look like XYZ in the future? We want, we want to keep it general so we can give flexibility to developers and the city so that we don't handcuff ourselves into a certain type of development or not be able to take advantage of different things that are going on as far as what the community desires? Is that, is that possible?
It's an excellent question. So I mean, I, I think that obviously we're keeping it kind of high level for the purpose of this discussion. There are a whole bunch of other documents and kind of other pieces that fit into the comprehensive plan and the development code. And so just taking an example that I think everyone probably knows is like the Transportation System Plan. And so the Transportation System Plan is, I mean, I think it's technically, you know, part of the transfer of the comprehensive plan, but it's its own standalone document and it has its own facets to it. And so it works in tandem with the comprehensive plan policies. And so we might have like a transportation policy in the comprehensive plan that says that we want to encourage, you know, use of different modes of transportation. And then we'd also see that mirrored in the TSP where we'd have a chapter on, you know, non-vehicular modes of transportation in that. And so the answer to your question just about like appearances is that I think that something that Twolton has not had, but other cities have experimented with is is essentially like sub-area design plans or like a corridor design plan. And that can be both form as far as like where do buildings go and fit in with each other and how do they interact? And then it can also be substance as far as like, what do those buildings look like once they're built? And so I think that's actually, you know, probably a good, a good thing to to think about or we could look at some examples of those and circle back with you and see if that's a topic of of greater interest. It is to me, but that's my world. And so I don't think everyone else is necessarily along for the ride.
I know. I appreciate it. It's also one of mine to get a little bit more flexible and a little bit more forward-thinking a city versus being tied down by the development code and zoning. So thanks, Steve. Anyone else have questions? All right. Continue on.
Thank you. And I'm actually going to turn it over at this point to Aaron Engman, who's going to walk you through, like I said, when is the land use process required in Twolton?
Great. Thanks, Steve. So let me go back to sharing my screen and getting us queued up again. Bear with me. Okay, so let me advance to the next slide. So when is land use required in the city of Twolton? As you can see from the slide, land use review is inclusive of any exterior modification to real property and can sometimes include change in building occupancy when a single-family use is converted to a commercial or an industrial use. And in Twolton, we have various land use process types, and they can vary quite a bit. They range in impact from something small like the removal and replacement of a few trees on commercial property to the development of a multi-building industrial park. They can also vary in the level of effort required for both staff and the applicant. So looking at the slide, type one applications do not require public notice and then are typically issued within 10 business days. And then whereas the type four application requires public noticing, a recommendation from planning commission at a hearing with a decision rendered at a city council hearing through the adoption of an ordinance. And this application type can take five months or more to process. Our most common application type for new development is a type two process. This application type requires public noticing and is issued by staff. The new city of Twolton Service Center on our operations site serves as the recent example of a type two architectural review application. And we also have some application types that require discretion of a hearing's body. A recent example that hit the triple crown of type three processes is the PGE Integrated Operations Center. This development required a conditional use permit to review a wireless communications facility use as well as a variance to allow some relief to the height and setback standards for a wireless communication facility. The operations center itself required an architectural review board decision for large-scale development. So what happens during land use? There are a few actions that transpire before an applicant may submit a type two or greater application, including a pre-application meeting with staff to review the applicant's preliminary proposal and a neighborhood developer meeting that provides an opportunity for neighboring properties to review and comment on the proposal. And once we receive a complete application, we will then notice surrounding property owners and our partner agencies and invite them to comment on the proposal. Before rendering our decision, staff will review all comments received and will review the proposal to standards in our development code. If applicable standards are not being met by the application, staff will impose conditions of approval to ensure the development will meet our adopted standards. Once a decision is rendered, all those who standing are noticed of the decision and informed of an appeal period. And so with the next steps, once the applicant has its decision, we need to address all conditions of approval before we can issue a building permit. And those conditions can include public and private improvement, middle of amended plans to show compliance, and some middle of legal documents as well as requirements to mitigate impacts of development. So with that, that kind of concludes my portion of the presentation. So I'm going to see if I can stop sharing my screen and just take a pause and see if there's any questions based off that information that I just shared.
Also, Pratt.
I have two questions. One is, it's like you're a private homeowner. How do you know if you need a permit or not? If it's attached to the house, is that like if you did a deck or something or did a structure? And then my second question is just like on the other permit, the, you said the process takes five months. And I'm wondering why it takes five months? Like, I'm sure it's an involved process, but I just wondered why.
Right. Those are great questions. Thank you. So for residential properties, our process are smaller in scope. So we do review new homes, but only substantial additions to those homes require a second architectural review process. For smaller things like decks or sheds, those typically can go straight to building permitting. And we'll just do a peer review to make sure that setback standards and the like are met. And then for your second question regarding the type four applications, those are what we call quasi-judicial in nature. And because there are larger lists to maybe amend zoning or text in our development code, it goes through different channels so that we can get the appropriate approval. And that's why it takes a little bit longer. And I don't know if Steve or Sean have anything to add to that.
But I think Sean will get to it a little bit in his presentation. But I think the difference with the the type four applications is that they're not required to be processed within that same 120-day timeline. Five months is probably inclusive of all the steps, whereas 120 days is just after completeness. We try to do them both as quickly as we can, certainly, particularly where their applicant initiated, for example. But we're not bound to those timelines. And so I mean, I think the idea is because of the fact that they're high-level applications that require the council's application of policy judgment to them that we shouldn't have to rush the application and that we should be able to take the necessary time to address concerns and respond to them.
Thank you, Steve. But I would, I would also say an offer that some of that five months and Steve alluded to it is the process. So there's all these steps in the process and many of them have required notice periods through either 14 days or 30 days or, you know, so there's these noticing requirements along the way of these steps that add up and make it longer than maybe it otherwise would be.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Other questions? Don't see any hands up. All right.
With that, I'm okay. I was just going to go back to my screen sharing and turn it over to Sean.
All right. Thank you, Aaron. All right. So with my portion of the presentation, this just gives a kind of an overview of what I'm prepared to discuss. So first, there's going to be two different types of land use hearings that the council will see legislative and quasi-judicial. We'll talk about those. Then we'll talk about also the land use process and then get into some specific issues related to land use and public hearings. And those are ex parte contacts, bias, and finally, conflicts of interest. Next slide, please. So here are the two side-by-side comparisons of both of legislative land use hearing as well as a quasi-judicial. And so the differences are when you're in a legislative land use hitting hearing, you're sitting as a judge, or excuse me, sitting as a legislator. Whereas in a quasi-judicial, you're sitting as a judge. In the legislative process, you're enacting laws that broadly apply and you're creating new criteria. And that ends up adding or amending the development code. On the quasi-judicial side, you're actually applying the law that already exists to specific property or a specific area. And you're applying that evidence to those criteria. So during the hearing, the applicant and others are providing evidence and you're, you're using that evidence to determine whether or not the existing criteria has been met. And then through that process, you're going to issue a written order or a decision that may be an ordinance or it may be a resolution. And then on the legislative side, there's no requirement to enact the law. So on the quasi-judicial, you have 120 days to issue a decision. On a legislative side, there is no 120-day rule. And then on the legislative side, conflicts of interest, that still applies. But ex parte contacts and bias do not apply. Whereas on the quasi-judicial, all three of those apply. Next slide, please. So let's talk a little bit about legislative land use hearings. So these are type four in the, in the, as described by by Steve and Aaron in the earlier part of the presentation. And as I said, this is where council is creating a new law or establishing new land use criteria. And this is done through mostly through the plan map amendment process where you're creating a new zone or changing the zone or through changing of the code through the plan text amendment process. Next slide, please. So at council, the legislative hearing process, there is a notice that's already published by staff to the DLCD and and through the and to the public. Then the actual process is the mayor introduces the item. The councilors then, at that point in time, they must disclose conflicts of interest. And I'll get into what those conflicts of interest disclosures require later on. Then the council conducts the public hearing part of the of the legislative process. And then once the the hearing, there's a, at the conclusion of the hearing, the council either enacts an ordinance to amend the code or provide the zone change. And this ordinance requires legislative findings that need to address compliance with statewide land use issue, land use laws that, you know, those 19 goals that were discussed earlier as well as the requirements of the city comprehensive plan, master plans, and then also the the metro urban growth management plan and other metro code. And then upon conclusion, once the council adopts that ordinance and staff provides that final notice to DLCD. Next slide, please. So the quasi-judicial decisions, these again are also top type four decisions. Again, there, in this process, the council is, the criteria has already been established in the code by the council. And so at this point, the council is just applying that criteria to the evidence that is presented during the hearing. So ultimately, the question is, did the applicant prove their case, just like in a court case or a legal matter? And where this occurs before council are going to be annexations. And those are typically what the council sees the most of related to quasi-judicial. But there are others. So removal of a historic landmark designation, demolition or relocation of historic landmarks, plan amendments for specific types of properties. And this is a hybrid approach. So this would normally be a legislative decision, but because it only applies to one or a small number of properties, the law requires the council to treat this as a quasi-judicial process. And then any type of appeals from one of those lower processes. So those type one through type three processes that have appeals, if those appeals can eventually go before council. Next slide, please. And then with quasi-judicial, the final decision has to be made within 120 days of the date the application is deemed to complete. And then if no decision is made, then the applicant can take the matter to circuit court through what's called a writ of mandamus process. And at that point in time, the city council loses jurisdiction of that process. And the court then determines whether or not the application should be approved or denied. And through that process, the court will always approve it unless the city can prove that the application violates the code or that there's some sort of condition that is needed in order for that application to comply with the code. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned before, there's this kind of legislative quasi-judicial hybrid process. And this is for site-specific legislative decisions. So this is one when one property wants to change the code that only applies to it or is is it doesn't, the the law would not generally apply kind of citywide or to a larger number of properties and it's limited. So state law requires that these quasi-judicial procedures actually apply to this legislative, otherwise legislative decision. Under this type of hybrid process, or the 120-day rule does not apply. So it's generally just the regular legislative process, except we have to treat it as quasi-judicial for, because of its limited impact. Next slide, please. So how does the quasi-judicial hearing process occur before council? So again, there's a notice of a public hearing that's as part of the the agenda as well as notice sent out to various other entities. The council then conducts the hearing through that. There's a script that's required by state law that the mayor will read. And then the councilors at that point in time, once it's it's open, there's an ex parte communications that must be disclosed. Any bias must be disclosed. And then any conflicts of interest must be disclosed. And again, we'll talk a little bit more in detail about those a little later on. And then there's the evidentiary portion of the hearing where both the applicant as well as anyone who wishes to present evidence can do so. At that point in time, once all the evidence and application has been, or an applicant has presented evidence, the council can close a hearing. There is a motion deliberations and a vote, just like all other council actions. And then normally what happens is you direct staff to bring back a final written decision at a future meeting. Now, sometimes this is already in the packet, and so there's no need to come back with another, for another meeting. But sometimes there is a need. And so at that future meeting, the council will then vote on the resolution or ordinance to actually implement that final written decision. And then appeals. So in both the legislative and quasi-judicial process, there's an opportunity to appeal for either the applicant or anyone challenging the action or legislative, anyone that that also appeared. And for the legislative process and because quasi-judicial process, it's 21 days from the date of the decision. Generally, for the legislative, what people are challenging are relate to the statewide land use laws, the metro code as well as the city's own code and master plans. And then on the quasi-judicial And then on the quasi judicial side, they're challenging first whether or not the criteria is lawful. But the, the many app, or many appeals actually get to whether or not the, the council applied the criteria or the proper criteria to the evidence in the record. And then also whether or not there's a sufficiency of evidentiary record to support the decision that was made. And so you will always hear, most people refer to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals as LUBA, the acronym. So when you hear that, that's what people are talking about is that. All right. Next slide. So before I get into our ex parte contacts, let me just pause right here and just ask if there are any questions about kind of the first little part of that presentation.
You got a question for Sean? Just yell it out since I can't see everybody.
Oh, this is, this is Council Hillier. So I'm wondering what would be an example in the system that the council would not come to a decision within the 120 days that would then move it on to a different, the circuit court? I mean.
Yeah. So some, sometimes when it, normally where we run into the 120 day rule issue is when it's an appeal of a, of like a planning commission decision or something of that nature, where some time has been spent with the application and a, and a preliminary decision has been made, but a final decision has not. And so during that time, we can sometimes run up against those 120 day rule periods. Now, the applicant can always volunteer to extend that and they normally do. And they can extend that for, for almost up to a year before an applicant, before any time runs out. So, but they can't extend it past that. So we normally get that, that extension, but there are occasions where, you know, there are plenty of cases where people don't do that and the remedy is to take that to circuit court.
Other questions for Sean? I'm not seeing the hands up, Sean, so.
All right. Let's move on to ex parte contacts.
I have a question.
Oh, okay. Counselor Rance?
Well, this might sound dumb, but an example of what would be a conflict of interest or whether it would be a, I guess, yeah, conflict of interest, but what would be an example of that?
Yeah. So let me get into conflict of interest. I get into later on in the presentation and there, there's two different types, actual and potential, and I'll get into the differences between them and then some, some issues related to that. So that, that's coming up a little later on.
Okay. You can go on. Sorry.
All right. So ex parte contacts. So these apply only to quasi judicial decisions. And so it's not legislative decisions that these apply to. And the origins of this is in the due process laws of, of our country. So the right to be heard, the right to an impartial tribunal or judge, the right to present and rebut evidence. And ultimately, you know, the question is, you know, should a judge discuss the case with one party outside of the presence of another party and outside the presence of the public? And I think we'd all agree the answer is no. There shouldn't be backroom deals. That should all be out in the open and, and at least allow both sides who are on the issue to know what's, what's going on with the case and, and with the judge. So that's the origin of the reason these, this requirement exists. Next slide, please. So the, oh, sorry. The elements, this is what the elements are of an ex parte contact are, but simply it's any communication. So that can be written oral or electronic or any other way, you know, received outside of the hearing process. And then that communication is regarding some, something related to the subject matter of the hearing. And then it occurs while the matter is, is pending before the hearing body. So that's after a formal application has been made and before a final decision has been made. So if no application has occurred, you cannot have an ex parte contact. Next slide, please. So here are some common ex parte situations. One main one is council communication with staff. So these are generally not ex parte contacts. So when the council is consulting with staff regarding the evidence presented in the, in the matter or concerning interpretations or application of the code, those type of situations would not be considered ex parte contacts. However, if for instance, the communication with staff presents some new evidence that's not in the record and the council or decision maker wants to rely on that new evidence as part of the decision, that's where it could be ex parte. So one example would be if there was an application before the council and staff relayed that this application, if approved, would create a thousand new jobs. But if that wasn't part of the record and one of the reasons you wanted to make that decision was, was for those jobs, that would be an ex parte communication. However, if that was all in the record, then it's not an issue. So another situation are with attorneys. So any action or any communication with the city attorney, that's not ex parte contact. However, communication with a party attorney, so an applicant's attorney, or if somebody had an attorney and was opposing an application, those communications with those attorneys outside of the hearing would be ex parte contacts. Another frequent one is site visits. So sometimes counselors will go out and visit sites that are subject to applications. That site visit itself is considered an ex parte contact. And then finally, any kind of news articles. So if a news article in these, this situation, specific situation, when it urges a result and it discusses a fact or issue in the pending matter, if you were to read, for instance, an editorial that said the council should vote yes for these reasons, then that, reading that is considered an ex parte communication. Next slide, please. So the, the hearing scenario. So this is another frequent one where there's a recess of a hearing. Sometimes people will try to come up to the council and, and talk about an issue. Those discussions would be considered ex parte contacts, even after the close of a hearing, but before the final written decision is issued. Any type of contacts regarding the substance of the hearing would be considered an ex parte contact. And then finally, on appeal. So this is also a strange one, but if, if a matter of the council issued a final decision and that decision was then appealed to LUBA and then in between that time, the council or a counselor had contacts regarding the matter. If that appeal is then remanded back from LUBA, back to the city council, then those contacts that occurred are ex parte contacts and would then have to be disclosed. So the cure, so I will not make you sing. I will show you, show you how to do that trick, which is to cure ex parte contacts. So ex parte contacts are not the end of the world. If they occur, there is a process to ensure that the, the public is aware and there's an opportunity for people to know what occurred and then submit evidence to rebut that, the, what it, what occurred. So the first way to cure is that you announce that the ex parte contact has occurred and that must be done at the next public hearing immediately after the contact. Sometimes we will actually have to reopen the hearing in order for that to occur. So if the hearing was closed, but a final decision had not been made, we'd reopen the hearing and have those ex parte contacts disclosed. And then it has to be before the public hearing begins or resumes. You also have to state the nature and substance of the contact. That has to be specific enough to allow the parties to respond and rebut evidence. So just saying I have, I had an ex parte contact, that's not sufficient. You know, I had an ex parte contact with, you know, Ms. Ramirez and she told me to vote no on the zone chains because the traffic will increase in residential neighborhoods, including her specific neighborhood. That would be something that was, it is sufficient. If you receive it by letter or you receive the contact by email, or if it was a news to paper article or something of that, to, to go ahead and state what that contact was, and then we would just go ahead and submit that communication into the record so that it's clear what that communication was. And then once the, the communication has been disclosed, then all parties to the proceedings get to actually question the decision maker and rebut any evidence that was presented on the record. So that, that is the last piece that, on how to cure an ex parte contact. All right. Next slide. So what are the risks if you do not cure? So one is you have a violation of the substantial rights of the parties. Again, going back to the due process piece, the right to be heard, right to an impartial tribunal, present evidence. And it can actually be a basis for invaliding the decision. People will bring these up as part of LUBA cases. So if it's appealed, one ground for appeal is that it was ex parte contacts occurred and that the party didn't get an opportunity to rebut that evidence. And then finally, if the litigation could ensue, if for instance, the ex parte contact didn't actually occur until well after the, the issue was decided and a party could bring that up as a, as a basis for litigation and trying to invalidate that decision. All right. At this point, I will pause and ask if there are any questions on ex parte contacts.
Question for Sean now that, now that he's made you paranoid. No questions? Wow.
All right. And yeah, again.
Yeah, the most common two that I've seen over ex parte, as Sean mentioned, is that a lot of people don't think of is the tendency to drive by the property or look what's going on to make sure to disclose that. And newspaper articles or magazine articles, a 12th and life article, those are things that people forget about. And those are the two most common ones I remember in the last few years that people just overlook and forget about. But remember those things and please note those when we're having a hearing. I think Cindy, you just had your hand up?
So is social media included in that then I assume? Because that's a news source.
Correct. Yeah. So social media would, would extend to, to that. So if they are advocating for a result and they're talking about the evidence, then yes, that would be ex parte.
So make sure when you're reading next door or avoid reading next door when you got something coming up. Because you know, if you read something, you have to disclose that.
Yep. And again, it's not the end of the world, but if you do, just, just let staff know and we can, we can help you through that process and make sure that it's all disclosed.
And just final thing, sorry to delay it. Can, did you, can you clarify? So when emails come in from residents, that that's not ex parte because it came into the council email and it's being logged and added to the public record, correct?
So yeah, we're adding it to the public record. So if, if it occurred after the hearing, then, then that would be ex parte. And so then we'd have to, we'd have to cure that, which is we'd submit it into the record and disclose that, you know, if it went to all the counselors, all the counselors received this and we're putting it into the record. But if it's before the hearing even starts, none of that is, is ex parte because that's going to be put into the record so that it's clear what's, what's already been discussed.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to bias. So bias is when a decision maker, that, a decision maker is substantially impairs a party's ability to receive a full and fair hearing. So that can be in favor or against something. And in Oregon, you have to prove actual bias and it's very difficult to prove, but it is possible to do so. So this is just one area to, to also watch out for as you're deciding these cases. And again, this is, only applies to quasi judicial, not legislative. But actual bias is when you prejudice or prejudge a case to such a degree that you're incapable of making a decision on the merits. So this could be personal bias. You don't like somebody or you don't like what they're doing, personal prejudice or interest in the outcome itself. So you have a personal interest. Next slide, please.
Sorry, my keys are sticking.
That's okay.
Trying to advance the slide.
All right. So to establish bias, someone must show there have been explicit statements, pledges, commitments that the elected local official has prejudged the specific matter before the tribunal. And there are some cases, one, probably the, the most recent is out of Columbia River Keepers versus Clatsop County. And what that case is, holds is there's certain things that are in, found insufficient. So they, they did not prove actual bias. And this included circumstantial evidence based on prior acts of a decision maker, statements made in a campaign, a prior active appeal on opposition to a similar project, prior praise for legislation, legislation opposing the project and prior newspaper articles about the project being a bad idea. So all of that was found to be insufficient. Now examples to prove bias would be if the matter was before the council and a counselor actually during that, depending of that application, actually wrote an editorial saying, this was a, this is a horrible, horrible idea, or I promise I will never vote for this. Those type of statements that it would be shown as actual bias because the application is before you and you're expressing those, those views. Next slide, please. All right. I will pause again just to, if there are any questions about bias before getting into the final category of conflicts of interests.
Any questions? Can't see if you had your hands up. So go ahead and shout it out.
All right. Well, I'll move on. And if somebody has a question, you can always, always chime in and we can go back to it. So conflicts of interest. So this applies to both legislative and quasi judicial actions. And again, this is based in state law or S chapter 244. And there are two types of conflicts, actual conflicts and potential conflicts. And they're very similar, but they do have one major difference or more than one, but one major difference is in the elements. And then how to, how to go about disclosing those conflicts of interest. Next slide, please. So an actual conflict of interest is an action or a decision or recommendation by a public official. And again, this would apply to not only the council, but advisory boards as well. The effect of which would be to the private pecuniary benefit or detriment of a public official, relative of a public official, a business with which the public official is associated, a business with which the relative of a public official is associated. And there are certain categories that are accepted from the definition of business. And those are nonprofit 501(c) corporations if a member is the, the member of, you're a member of a nonprofit. You're on, in a position on the board of directors or your association with that 501(c) is an unpaid relationship. Now, relative also has various definitions, but this also includes spouses, domestic partners, children, brothers and sisters, as well as their spouses and domestic partners, parents, and then persons who receive from or provide financial benefits to the public official. So if you're paying child support or alimony to somebody, then that would be also considered a relative for conflicts of interest purposes. Next slide, please. And then this is the required action. If you do have an actual conflict of interest, you must disclose the nature of the conflict of interest and the reason for abstaining. And again, abstention is one of the requirements if you have an app, an actual conflict of interest. an actual conflict of interest. That means you cannot vote and you cannot discuss the matter before that that is pending before the council. So you must give the reasons for the conflict. So I have a conflict is not enough. So you have to give the specific reason why you have a conflict. So if it is, it involves a relative. You know, your your sister has an application before the the council. You know, I saying that my sister is the person who has an application before the council and that whether or not it's approved or disapproved will provide a financial benefit to that to that relative. Then that would provide enough to state that actual conflict. However, what a lot of counselors can get into trouble with is just saying I have a conflict and not disclosing what the reason is or giving sufficient basis to to disclose that conflict. And then I won't get into the rule of the rule of necessity with actual conflicts. But there there can be situations where an action is required to be taken and a majority or all of the council may actually have an actual conflict. For instance, if four counselors had had held stock in a company and that company had an application before the council, all of those four counselors would be conflicted. And then, but you still have to vote on that application. So there are some rules that allow for a rule of necessity. So you can vote on the matter, but you can't discuss or you cannot participate any deliberations during that matter. And that's a very specific process. And we want to look at that and go through state law to make sure that we're following that process if it were to arise. Next slide, please. So now there is potential conflicts of interest. And again, the elements of potential and actual conflicts of interest are identical except for the effects element. And for a potential conflict of interest, the effect element is it could be to the private pecuniary benefit or detriment of a public official. So again, actual conflict, it would be potential conflict, it could be. Other than that, all of the other elements are the same, as well as the same exceptions for business and non nonprofit businesses. Next slide, please. So this is the required action for a potential conflict is very much the same. You must disclose the nature of a conflict stating I have a conflict is not sufficient. So again, you got to state the basis for the conflict. However, once you do so, you can still participate in that discussion. You may still participate in voting. However, you may still choose to recuse yourself, but that's not required. Next slide, please. So the failure to disclose whether or not an actual or potential conflict provides possible personal liability under ORS 244. And that comes under the jurisdiction of the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. They would investigate any violations of conflicts of interest laws. And then the decision itself may be voided. If if a substantial number, for instance, if a majority of the council actually had the conflicts, then then it could be that the the decision itself is voided. However, it's going to be dependent on the circumstances of the matter. Next slide, please. So questions about conflicts of interest? So first, the only entity that can provide advice regarding conflicts of interest is the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. So you can contact me and I can assist you through the process of getting in touch with the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. And there's different levels to go through. Staff advice or or the full counsel or excuse me, full commission. And I can walk you through and help you draft letters and all of all of those pieces. However, if I was to give you advice and that advice turned out to be incorrect. So if you asked me, is this a conflict of interest? And I said, oh, no, that's not a conflict. You can't rely on that advice as a defense to the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. So if it turns out I was wrong, you can't rely on what is otherwise known as a defensive counsel advice and or defense. And and so proposes a an issue for again, the only entity that can provide that advice is the Government Ethics Commission. I also say to just be aware of perceived versus legal conflicts. For instance, an applicant of a best friend, that is not a legal conflict of interest. So if your very best friend of of twenty years had an application before the council, that's that's not a conflict, but others may perceive that as a conflict. Additionally, sometimes it's not easy to tell whether it's an actual conflict or a potential conflict, or whether or not a conflict even exists at all. And then there are very many exceptions. There are class exemptions that apply, and it can get very complicated. So again, if if there's any question, we can look to the statutes and then go through the Oregon Government Ethics Commission to work through the specifics and how the law specifically would apply to your given facts. And with that, I have a few quiz questions, but if anybody has any has any questions on conflicts of interest, we can skip the quiz.
I had one quick question.
Alright.
Okay. Um, with the investment conversation, I mean, we do, and I think a lot of people do index funds, so can you talk to that at all?
So I I'd have to go back to, again, going back to you can't rely on my advice on on conflicts of interest. I'll I'll put that caveat out there. In my view, that wouldn't be a conflict of interest because the the index fund is not the applicant before you. So but again, and and there's lots of advice and we can go back through and look at 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 the specifics related to the Oregon Government Ethics Commission and the prior advice they've given, but I don't believe that is a conflict. It would actually have to be you holding stock in the company where that has the, you know, the application before you.
Thank you.
President Grimes.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I have a question about one thing that's always really troubled me and we didn't really touch on it tonight, but I'm just curious. And that has to go with like campaign contributions from local companies, say in the city. That always happens every, you know, election cycle. Is there anything to set aside or call out companies or entities or developers or whatever it might be that have made a con a campaign contribution to a counselor that then has business that comes before the council?
Yeah, so those are generally exempt as far as class exemptions go. And so those campaign contributions, there's a again, a series of of exemptions in state law and and those being one. But again, I'd have to go back and and we'd have to go through the specifics on what was the you know, if you did have a camp going directly to your campaign and and there are lots of different scenarios that may impact the answer, but generally, the campaign contributions are not conflicts.
Okay.
Other questions for Sean? Pretty quiet. Counselor Sacco says, no, she's got this down. Okay, I don't see any other questions for you, Sean, Aaron, or Steve. Appreciate this. I think it's the second or third time I've seen this and each time something triggers my head to, you know, that's new or something I've forgotten. So I appreciate you doing this multiple times.
Thank you.
Well, in this time, we added kind of that history and then kind of what happened before a it becomes the land you before it gets to you. And so the Steve and Aaron part. And so thank you, Stephen, Aaron, for for adding to this presentation.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to show my age here. I am a big fan of the cure too, so. Alright, well, thank you all. So we'll go on to our second item on the work session. I think this is more legal information and that'd be labor relations 101. And I assume this we kicked off by Stacy, our HR person in charge.
You got it. So first off, thank you for having me here tonight and allowing me to review this with you. As you know, we're going to be headed into our negotiations with AFSMI this year and for a refresh and some just inside knowledge of why we why we do this, how we do this. We've done this work session for you and we'll run through this. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with you all. I have the PowerPoint pulled up. And you'll have to let me know if you can see it. I'm assuming everyone can see that. I don't know if it's going to let me run it. There we go. Does everyone see that? Yes, it's not perfect. Great. Alright, um, so the start with a little background about the city of Twolleton and what our workforce snapshot looks like. We are comprised of two separate unions. One is the Twolton Police Officers Association. You'll hear it referred to as TPOA with thirty one members in that union. We also have the American Federation of State, County, City Municipal Employees. Would it's also referred to as TEA. It was previously known as Twolton Twolton Employees Association, but it was recently in the last four or five years assumed by AFSMI. And then, so that has about ninety seven of our employees. And then we have our unrepresented staff, which are constituted by our exempt and our non exempt management staff in addition to some temporary employees that we may have on. Bargaining timelines. So AFSMI, as you know, we did a one year rollover this last year in 2020. It was set to expire June thirtieth of 2020. We started into this process. But at this point, we extended the contract to end June thirtieth of 2021. So we will again be engaging into that negotiations. And then TPO TPOA's contract expires on June thirtieth of 2022. So that will begin likely early next year. The collective bargaining process and why we do this. So the term collective bargaining is the process by which a union and the city engage in negotiations to create to finalize contract that will govern the subjects of bargaining. And why do we do this? Well, it's mandated by state law, specifically in Oregon, that law is the Public Employees Collective Bargaining Act, known as PECBA. And I'm going to run through a part of what PECBA requires of us for the bargaining process. So the first part of PECBA requires that we bargain in good faith for a hundred and fifty days. This law was first established back in nineteen seventy three. It gives Oregon public employees the right to form, join and participate in labor unions. And it also requires us and the union to engage in bargaining where we meet and bargain directly with each other, subject to ORS two four three point seven one two parentheses one. I didn't write it down for you, but it is in the memo that I attached to all the work session documents. So if there is information that I'm telling you, you can refer back to that memo to help with some of this information as well. And as I mentioned earlier, we have to bargain in good faith for a hundred and fifty days. Well, what does bargaining in good faith actually mean? It means that we agree to regularly and at reasonable times and places. We endeavor to actually reach an agreement. We're not just doing this just for pretend. We consider and respond to all proposals. So every single proposal that is presented on either side is given a thorough and accurate response, one that we've actually evaluated it and taken into consideration. Essentially, we can't just say no, no, no all the time. We do not bypass the authorized bargaining agent, or we don't otherwise undermine the other side's representatives. So again, we are being respectful and appreciative of each other at the table. Good faith does not require that we actually have to say yes, though. We just actually have to evaluate it and take into consideration all of the proposals as they come across. And then we consider them and then can agree to them. To ensure we meet that good faith bargaining, we will follow a set course. We will initially set a ground meeting, which or a first meeting, which generally sets the ground rules. We also will set a moratorium date for when the articles can be opened. So at the very beginning of all of our bargaining, any and all articles can be opened. But once we set a moratorium date and we have bargained past that date, any article that wasn't opened is considered agreed upon and that we will not open it. And with TEA, they generally, I don't know, may open all of them, maybe some not. It just depends on your bargaining party and how they want to do it. Some organizations will say, let's go through all of these articles. Let's consider them all opened and TA every article that we're done with. We're not going to talk about and get those out of the way. So it really just depends on on how we do that. Once we have a tentative agreement or an article has not been opened past this moratorium date, if we've TA'd everything that is open, that means that we've reached a tentative agreement for the entire contract. And by that, we would then send that forward for ratification and vote from our union. And then after the union agrees to that and has approved it, then it would also come to council and be ratified by council. Any questions with the timeline as that is presented as of yet? I can pause and ask you all if there's any questions on how that timeframe works.
President Stacy, so far?
Okay, good. Um, so if there is not a TA on every single article or that we hasn't been agreed upon and a tentative agreement hasn't been reached for the contract, that would be noted as modification or ratification when we would hit a TA with all of them. But if for some reason that doesn't happen, there are some other possible outcomes that can occur, starting with mediation, which has to be for a minimum of fifteen days impasse. So if the parties don't reach an agreement after the mediation portion, then either party can declare impasse. At that point, a final offer would be made. And that has to be done within seven days of the declaration of impasse. And then we would start moving into a cooling offer after cooling off period. That process looks a little bit different depending on if you're in a strike prohibited union or a non-strike prohibited union. So but I'll let you read about some of those that are in the memo. I don't think we need to get too into detail on those. But I just wanted you to know that there are some other possible outcomes that could occur, but we're always striving for ratification, of course. Alright, so why am I telling you all of this? What do you need to know about this? Well, we want to be able to help you understand your council role and how our negotiations work and to help make this process as smooth and as knowledgeable as possible for you. So we will expect that, or you can expect that we will meet in executive session with your contract negotiator negotiator, which is generally myself. You may have some visits from Dawn, our finance director and assistant city manager, and that he will come and help us with the establishment of economic parameters and talk about budget and where the city's at. You can also expect that we will keep you informed, let you know about the ongoing discussions that are happening and any impediments that we're starting to discover that may impede our ability to reach that agreement. Y'all have final ratification authority. So you will see a ordinance come through. Once the union has voted yay on the contract on the tentative agreement, then it will come through to council for final ratification authority with you all. And then the other thing that we we request that you do is stay confidential. And part of that is there's a pitfall known as the ULP, which is an unfair labor practice. So the statute which prohibits an a ULP is contained and So the statute which prohibits a ULP is contained and violates PECBA. Is governed by ORS two-four-three dot six-seven-two, in case you needed that information. And one way that we can run into some ULPs is either through what's known as an end run during council meetings or side bargaining from the union. So we just ask that if someone from the union reaches out to you, that you keep us informed. You let us know what's happening and just let us know what the contents of that discussion were. So that we don't end up having promised something in a, a side agreement. Or we at least can understand what that side discussion was so that we can address it at the table and make sure we don't hit a ULP. For unfair labor negotiations. A little bit on the background of our philosophy and, and why we bargain the way we do. The first and foremost thing is that we believe that the process and the negotiated contract is our chance to show our employees. That they really are our biggest and most valuable resource. We put a lot into it. We want to make sure that they know that they're appreciated and that we're doing everything we can to, to keep that. That asset intact, really. An effective bargaining is really based on that respect and working with our unions and meeting to problem solving. It really builds upon this multi-year relationship that we have with both of our unions. There's a lot of respect, a lot of care, a lot of consideration. Whether we're in or not in bargaining and our discussions that we have with our, with our unions. And we really do try and make sure that, that we are keeping that standard and that respect. And that level of openness and working together present throughout the bargaining process. And we also make every detailed effort to balance both the financial status of the city alongside with the needs of our employees. And keeping them gainfully employed and with the type of financial. Compensation that they deserve. So, what to expect? Very shortly, the city will begin the bargaining process with AFSMI. Like I mentioned previously, you can expect that HR. Myself, finance with Dawn. You might have Sean come in for some legal, legal discussions if necessary, come into executive session. And then hopefully we can expect some great things. And that's about all I have. Is there any questions or thoughts on what to expect or? Your role in negotiations or anything for me?
Questions for Stacy? You bring us back so we can see the gallery view?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
No problem.
There we go.
Alright, questions for Stacy? Council Reyes?
Just out of curiosity, you said that they might reach out to us or what would be a reason they will, might, they will reach out to us? Curious about that.
So we, in all honesty, we generally haven't had that happen at Twolton very much. But in some places, they may feel they might get a better response. Or one in which they can utilize counsel to, to ask a question, get a response. And, and basically head straight to you all. I didn't mention earlier that part of the value of having, you know, someone as a negotiator or the negotiator on the table. But it not being a member of council is that you are distanced actually from the table. And it gives, when, when someone comes straight to you, it's hard not to give them an automatic response, right? We want to give them that, oh yes, absolutely, of course we can do that. And those are the kind of things that it's just a caution, a word to the wise to avoid promising anything away from the table. And that it really will run through me and I will bring it to you of what they're requesting and making sure that they're getting what they need. But if you do happen to have a side conversation, just let us know about it so that we can address it and handle it.
Thank you. I was just curious about that. And if this happens, I mean, I haven't had anyone call me yet, but.
Yeah, it, it doesn't, like I said, I haven't heard of it really happening here with Twolton, but it does happen.
Thank you.
Council President Grimes?
Hi, um, I have, I have a question, but it's more of a kind of a reminder about something that we did about. A year ago, probably, or maybe at the very beginning of twenty twenty, where we went into executive session. Because we were in labor negotiations. And then we came out of executive session and we went into the council meeting. And then the issue came up in a council meeting. And in the process of discussing it and, and. Fact-finding and having a discussion about the. The contract, we ended up, and I'm me, ended up among, I think a couple others of us. Ended up discussing executive session material when we weren't supposed to. So I was wondering if you could sort of gently run through, like that, remember that whole big screw-up, which I totally was part of that. But remind us what we're.
I think that pertained a little bit to, so last year for one, we can say it was a very odd year in how things were handled. I think the discussion a little bit about the exec session came out in one of our work sessions. When we were talking about the COLA for management. And so that was kind of a cross of, of how it happened. Really, anytime we're talking about financial implications for AFSMI. Those should be done in our executive sessions about where we're setting authority and where we are talking about. The types of, of where we, where we want to head the money and, and things like that. So it's a great reminder, Nancy, of making sure that we are talking about the finances and decision-making. And a lot of those potentially. Binding decisions that are out in our work sessions, make sure that they are done in exec session. Yeah, then we can negotiate them at the table, so.
But, and just to jump in on, on that a little bit, the, do you mind if I jump in?
Oh, go ahead.
I, I think, I mean, I wouldn't beat yourself up too much about it. Because I think what ended up happening was somebody, me or Sean or some Stacy raised her hand and said. Well, that's exact session discussion. And if we need to reset into exact session to talk about it more, we can. And like Stacy said, last year was kind of this weird year and that was kind of this hybrid discussion. But the good reminder to, anything in exec session stays in exec session. Unless we agree that it's going to be talked about outside of exec session. And, you know, you remember that no decision can be, no ultimate approval for the decision can be made in executive session. So the ultimate approval will always be made out in the public meeting. So, so yeah, those reminders.
Thank you. Other questions for Stacy?
I do want to reinforce the, thank you for that reminder, Nancy, because it does sometimes. It kind of, everything flows. This, we, I forget where we talked about certain topics and then. So it was, it's a good reminder to have those kinds, when, when something like this happens to say, hey, maybe this is a. Executive session meeting. That way, we're reminded, we shouldn't be talking about this right now. Cause there's a lot conversation, there's a lot going on. And we forget where we talked, I forget sometimes where I, where I talked about certain topics. So thank you very much for bringing that up and, and please do tell us so we don't get in trouble.
Council Pratt?
Yeah, I guess my question would be, I understand why we talk about these things in executive session. But we're so taught that everything we discuss is supposed to be in a public meeting. So what determines what's, I mean, you just went over it, but generally speaking. Is there like a kind of rule we could keep in our heads for what's executive and what's public comment?
I see Sean is wanting to jump in on this one. He, he set up, you want to talk about the difference, Sean?
Yeah, so, you know, discussions in executive session, there are certain, you know, I, I think it was the last presentation. Talked in detail about what those topics can be. And one of them is labor negotiations. And so the rea, you know, the reason behind, as Stacy has already said, is we, we, we want to present things at the table. So there's give and take. And so if the, everything was discussed in an open session, then. The, the union would have the ability to see what it is exactly the council is thinking. And on every topic and, and where, where that is. And so without the opportunity for that give and take. And so that's kind of the, the basis for it. But the, the reason, you know, whatever's in executive session should be, should stay in executive session. If, if there's some topic that needs to be discussed in open session. You know, I, I think that should be a discussion that's kind of off with staff, off to the side. And, and whether or not we, the staff would recommend that that, that occur in open session. It certainly, there are topics that could, but whether or not they should and, and, and the advantages or disadvantages should be discussions with staff.
Thanks.
Other questions? Pretty good? Alright, thank you, Stacy.
Absolutely. And I look forward to seeing you probably in an exec session, probably in the next couple of meetings as we get started with all of it.
Alright, thank you. Okay, so moving on to item number three tonight is council agenda review and communication roundtable. So we have two items on consent agenda tonight. Any questions on those items? Alright, that'll move us on to council communications roundtable. I'll go in the order by, as I see people on Zoom. So we'll lead off with Councilor Hillier.
Good evening. I'm still getting the opportunity to get to plug in with the committees. I'm having lots of help from staff, as you would expect for that. But I did attend the school districts, state of the, state of the school district, I guess. If you will, state of the district is what they called it on January the twenty-seventh. And they really talked through the district, the reopening, the budgeting and the bonding, Student Investment Act, Student Voice, the CARES. And the Ready School Safe Learners and how that whole process is going. And just like to reiterate what great partners they are and how much they respect. Our city partnership as well. So that's on YouTube if you're interested in listening to it.
Thank you. Council Sacco?
Good evening, everybody. I am still getting my, getting my bearings on the committees that I'm participating in. I was able to sit in as an alternate to the Regional Water Consortium while at Bridget. Handle all that topic. And then tomorrow I have my first committee meeting with the, with the Willamette Water. And so I look forward to that tomorrow.
Great. Council Pratt?
Good evening. I attended the C4, the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee. And I sent everybody the PowerPoint from the ODOT presentation. So the gist of what I got out of it is that they are relying on tolling for the I-205 improvements. They made that blatantly clear. The only semi-good thing I thought is they, they seem to be looking at the whole corridor. So we might not have the big issues with traffic on Stafford Road, Borland Road. Other than that, they also did a legislative update. And what the governor for her last two years, two of her things on her legislative goals. While she's still in office or that I thought were great for Twolton is that she wants to support and help communities create response plans. For evacuations. And she also wants to get two-hundred-and-fifty million. Dedicated to affordable housing, homeless prevention and rental assistance. So hopefully some of that'll come our way. And then the last thing I just wanted to, we all got emails from Beth Ditman and T-Park regarding. Acknowledging the native lands and native peoples that lived here. And so I would like to request that we add that as a working session item to. Both look at her logo and the history of that and how it acknowledges the native land and people. And also maybe adding something to our agenda that just makes that acknowledgement each time we meet.
Alright, so are folks amenable to have this put on a future work session? Just head nods to be, right? Looks like you got the votes needed, alright?
Alright, thank you.
Work session? Is that it, Valerie? Okay, Council Reyes?
Um, not much. We're just gonna meet with the, the advisory committee. Appointees probably next week. I think we need like the second Monday of the week, of the month. So we haven't, haven't heard back, haven't heard from Nicole whether we have anyone interested in joining any committees. But that's basically the committee that I was hoping we can, I can. Attend and, but not much going on. The MAC committee is just a little. They just sent us an email talking about how people are moving more. To internet versus having an actual cable TV. And so there's more on that, but I haven't heard when we're gonna meet. So those are just the two things that I, that I know so far. So I'll keep you guys posted. That's all. Sure.
Thank you. Council Brooks?
Hi, everybody. Thanks. I'm gonna start off with, I sent out an email today. With the NLC, National League of Cities Real Equity Resolution. And I wanted to see if people were amenable to putting that on our work session. I want to, I love your cat walking by. I want to, to, you know, it's, it's February. It's Black History Month. So first of all, I just want to say I acknowledge Black History Month. And, and acknowledging that in several ways personally. And I thought that this is a national agenda, an initiative by the National League of Cities. Which is a bipartisan organization. And I thought it was a very well put out thing. So I'm hopeful that four of us will agree with me tonight.
And that's to put it on the agenda for discussion or do the proclamation itself?
I would like to do the proclamation at the next council meeting so that we could get it in. By February for Black History Month, if the council. Sees fit.
So I got, I'm gonna go a process question for Sherilyn, because we do have new counselors. Can you, Sherilyn, quickly review the process for, review the process of how proclamations work for the new counselors?
Sure. So if there's a proclamation that someone in the community would like, they need to send it to a counselor. To, to be a sponsor. And that, that counselor raises it at, at a, a council meeting or a work session. And then you decide, you need four people to decide to put it on an agenda. If you, as a counselor, so in this case, Counselor Brooks, would like a proclamation put on a specific date. You're essentially the sponsor. And you need to get three other counselors to agree. And then when to put it on the agenda. So agree that it goes on the agenda and then when, and then when it goes on the agenda.
Right. I just want to get everybody up to speed on how it works. Council Pratt?
What if I just want one single word change in the proclamation?
I was gonna, because that's, I, there's some wordsmithing I saw also.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. We could wordsmith it in between the sessions, if you wouldn't mind. And have it part of public record. We just do it to all council.
Yeah. Other than that, I'm fully in favor of it.
Thank you.
So, can I just, sorry? I think last time, because what we have, I've had experience where we've had a wordsmith proclamations, and it had to be done in work session. You can't do it via email, correct, Sean?
That's correct.
Yeah. So the wordsmithing hat would have to be done when this is put on the next work session. And then, if we all agree to the revised proclamation, then it could be voted on.
Can she just say what it is right now? Well, first, we want to see if there's four people.
So there are four folks that are interested in moving this proclamation up for discussion and review for next, or, well, obviously, yeah, next work session. So if we ideally can get this done in February. So I saw, all right. And then the wordsmithing would have to be done in work session. But is it okay, Sean, if someone sends suggestions to Counselor Brooks, or that has to be? How do you work that?
Yeah, so, so that gets into, you know, our serial meetings type question. So, so as long as it's not a majority of the council, and, you know, that, that's engaged in that wordsmithing, but then, then it's legal. But the, you know, the easiest is probably to just have that discussion in council, whether it's, whether it's now, or in a future, you know, meeting, but something where that, that, those wordsmithings are occurring in a meeting. Or they're sent, the suggestions are sent to staff to try to come up with the word, and then that's brought to council as kind of a final, final piece.
I like that idea.
Yeah, so in my mind, there's two, there's two options, and it kind of rips off of what Sean was saying. Either you talk about it now, and kind of wordsmith it, or those of you that have suggestions, send them my way, and I'll put it together, and and we'll put it on the, like, or revise the, the proclamation, according to your suggestion.
Okay, Counselor Brooks.
That sounds really good, actually. That'll give people a chance, because I know I just got it to you guys today. So that gives people a chance to think about it, and look at it, and send it to Sherilyn. I appreciate the thought behind it. I had one other, well, I will, I was also thinking about reaching out to the YAC to see if they also want to co-sponsor with me. Is that possible, or? Okay. I will do that. And then, go ahead.
Can I ask what that co-sponsor, what does that mean? I mean, if it's going to come on the February 22nd, how, what exactly are you thinking?
Um, just to, I would be the main sponsor, but if they wanted to also be part of the sponsorship of it, I just, because they seem to be, well, first of all, I see them at the NLC conferences in DC. So that's one thing where that group's really engaged. And they came up with such a really great diversity statement. And so I just thought that they might want the opportunity to also co-sponsor with me. And I just wanted to be able to give them that opportunity. I don't know if it's too late at this point, or if that would be a possibility.
We just don't have a process for the YAC sponsoring or co-sponsoring. But if, like, you want to reach out to them, or we can reach out to them, I can let Julie know that, that this is going to be on the 22nd, if they want to come, and, and either be part of that presentation. Maybe that's.
Yeah. Yeah, I would. That's exactly it. Just if they want to be involved, and, because I know they're really invested in their, yeah. Thanks. And and I haven't ever done that before, so thanks for your patience, you guys. I will also say that the Water Consortium, it was very nice to have Counselor Sacco there as well. It was the first time they did an orientation, so so I also attended, and it was good to have an overview of the mission and what their objectives are, and what our objectives are as a consortium laid out like that. There also is going to be some more presentation materials they're going to offer, and I will, when I get that information, I'll forward it and propose to present it to council. It's made for us to present to couns- to other counselor, to councils that are involved in the consortium. So it would be, and then I also talked about resiliency, and I will also forward information about that. The second big highlight was PAB. We went through the Zoom grant process, and Thursday, we will be making official decisions. So so news is coming for that, and that's exciting. And I also was officially made part of the Inner Ring Suburbs Council for the National League of Cities. So I just wanted to give you guys an update on that. And if you have questions about that, you can let me know. Finally, I attended the Toowallington River Keepers Annual Meeting, and just really made a few announcements. They're involved with lead training, so I talked about our library, exciting library changes, and also our great relationship with them located in our city. And finally, their collaboration with us and the Arts Committee on the Storm Drain mural project. So I just wanted to let you guys know that those, that warm thank you was extended at the annual meeting. And that's it for me. I'll forward some more information. Thanks.
Counselor President Grimes.
Thank you. I haven't had any commi- committee meetings since our last council meeting. But I did have something that I wanted to share. I was fortunate enough today to be able to schedule COVID vaccinations for my parents. It was, as everyone has noted in the news today, it was cumbersome and complicated. But I wanted to share two pieces of information that I found out today that were extremely helpful. And if I didn't have them, I would not have been able to make the appointment. And as of this evening, local news is reporting that of 168,000, I believe, seniors over the age of 80, that should have been additionally eligible to receive the vaccination, only 3% were actually able to make appointments in this coming week to be able to receive the vaccine. And I just think that that's a very low number. And I think that we should all try as much as we can to reach out to friends and family members that might be in this newly eligible category for the vaccine, and see how we can help. Not all the seniors in our community are as, either have access to internet, or, you know, perhaps have some of the skills that it takes to kind of go through crashing sites, and being thrown out of pages, and that sort of thing, that we might be able to be of assistance. But the, I want to share the website that I was able to use today to get the vaccine scheduled. And it was ohhsu.edu/COVIDvaccines. And there's also an 833 number that goes with it, 1-833-647-8222. And I found them, both of those resources to be super helpful. And I hope that we can keep the information and share it with people we know, family, friends, neighbors, that might be needing help accessing the vaccines. So that's what I have to share to them.
Repeat that number again?
The phone number?
Uh huh, the phone number. Thank you.
And, yeah, the information is specifically, it connects you with ohhsu. But they seem to, their website and everything today seem to be much more reliable, and wasn't locking up as badly as some of the other ones were. So I found it to be greatly helpful. So I'd love by, you know, the beginning of next week, that we're at a lot more than 3% of our senior population being able to receive the vaccine. So.
I'd say thank you very much, Nancy. I tried for almost two hours to get an appointment through the covidvaccineoregon.gov from my mother-in-law, and it was a whole lesson in frustration. And when I called the number, I got a message, the 211 number, I got a message, "We've taken all the calls we're taking today. Try again tomorrow." So it, I mean, I'm pretty good at getting through those things, and I had a terrible time. So I can't imagine some other people, how horrible it is for them. So thank you very much.
Yeah, please, please use that website that I mentioned, because it really, it really works, and it just was perfect. I, I can't say enough about what ohhsu has done to really kind of step up in a public health emergency. So and good luck, because I know it's very difficult.
Right. Thank you. But for older people, sometimes they're, like you said, Nancy, there, it's harder for them to navigate the, the internet and be able to set an appointment. So phone numbers typically work ahead. Have a couple neighbors who are older, mature, that might be easier for them to make a phone call versus navigating the entire internet system. So.
Yeah. And especially when there's tech, you know, technical difficulties that are met along the way. It just makes it that much more difficult. If you do go to the state of Oregon, one, I mean, it's just, there's a lot of difficulties. It's, you know, it's a giant system that's being crushed by users. But I just, my message is more about reaching out to people that you might think of that may need some help, and these were good resources that worked for us today.
Is that it, Nancy?
Yep, I'm done.
Well, I'll, I'll just dovetail, I'll launch off that, that this morning, Governor Brown had, I sent you the email, executive summary. But I'm gonna get some numbers out and webpages also. Governor Brown had a statewide mayor's call this morning. And you've got the executive summary, but for the public, what was mentioned, for those that are 80-plus, there are ways to get information. And the governor's well aware of the frustrations people are having with websites crushing, or technical ability of our seniors to get to these things. The new website was created, and it's up and running. I just checked it. It's called getvaccinated.organ.gov. It's going to be a centralized state repository of getting yourself registered for a vaccine, if you're one of our seniors. They're also saying that for those folks who don't have internet access, but you do have a phone, you can call 211. But like Counselor Pratt said, if they get buried, 211 will register your senior parents, relatives, neighbors, who do not have internet access, who do not have a cell phone, that you can be selected as a designate for them. And they will give you the information when that person you're interested in is eligible. They also came up with today, you can text ORCOVID, or, or COVID, to 898-211. And that's a text bot that will, will get you registered to get information and updates about vaccine distribution. They're trying all different mechanisms to get the word out. So text, phone number, websites. The plan right now, for those who were not seeing the media yet, 80-plus year olds are this week. And then we'll go down to 75-plus on the 15th, 70-plus on the 22nd, and then 65-plus on March 1st. The state anticipates on February 21st, or so, to start getting 70,000 doses a week. So they're gonna be going out to get, ohhsu, as was just mentioned by Nancy, is the Region One Coordinator for shots and immunizations. So they are the folks who are organizing and getting the shots out. But yes, take, take a look at the 211, getvaccinated.oregan.gov, or texting ORCOVID to 898-211 for those seniors you want to get lined up with vaccination. They're anticipating, hopefully, moving on to the next phase of vaccinations by April. So ideally, get into Phase Two of the shots, but we'll see how that goes, of course, all based on amount of vaccine that comes to the state. Looping back, I was in quite a few meetings with updates over the last couple of weeks. Back in Westside Economic Alliance, had the Director of Work Systems, Inc. Come in and give us a briefing on the status of workforce training in the tri-county area. This is the organization that gets money from the second, from the Department of Labor, to help organize workforce training in the tri-county area, and get people trained on those kind of skills that will give them a bright future with very good salaries, be that college or vocational training. Then Greater Portland, Inc., Small Cities Consortium, they released the Site Readiness Toolkit for municipalities that participate in Greater Portland, Inc. So this little toolkit gives you an idea of what you need to do in your city to attract developments. You know, depending what you want to get, manufacturing, industrial, high-tech, distribution, whatever kind of businesses you want to attract, this toolkit will assist you in what you need to get ready in your city. They also gave a 2020 review of what worked well, and some of their highlights for 2020 in Greater Portland, Inc. And they have a preview of what they're gonna be looking, working on this year. On the 28th, the Metro Mayor's Consortium had the Program Director for the I-5 Bridge present on where they're at on the I-5 Bridge design and public involvement campaign. It is proceeding, and so far, so good, as far as the two states getting along, the two legislatures and the two governors. You know, they had some design ideas. Of course, they're very excited with the new administration, that there actually might be some funding to actually pay for this bridge. If it comes around, they're looking for, they're looking towards not having this fall apart like it did last time. That this will proceed and be a success. Later that day, I know, I think Bridget was there, participated in the League of Oregon Cities at the Capitol Day. That was about a few hours that day, listening to the minority and majority leaders of both houses and the governor, speaking to the League of Oregon City Representatives. Moving on to February, had a nice one-on-one with the new mayor, Beaverton, Mayor Lacy, Lacy Beatty. We discussed how our cities could work together and advance some of the things we agree on in the region, mainly on transportation. We agree on a lot there. So I look forward to working with Mayor Beatty. And then finally, on the 4th, the Toowallington Chamber of Commerce, remember, I'm an ex-officio member there, had their board planning session, which was facilitated by our own Jonathan Taylor, who did a terrific job in helping the board map out the next 240 days where they want to be post-COVID, and serving the community and their members. And with that, I think that's, oh, final thing. Today was Washington County Corning Committee. I asked Sherilyn about maybe getting this on agenda. The Washington County staff at D-LUT is doing what they're calling the Complete Streets Update. And asked them if they could come and present at City Council, so you all can get this update on how Washington County is envisioning how streets will be laid out, built, and cities built around it. They have what are called area types. And there was quite a bit of discussion on street width, sidewalks, bike path. It's basically the future of how those streets, those facilities that are built by or maintained by Washington County, the design standards that they're going to be looking the design standards that they're going to be looking forward, uh, to. Um, and we'll always defer to a city's land use rules, but they may sometimes come in conflict. And these are things we're going to need to know to see what Washington County envisions, how will load, uh, load, how a road should be built in the future. And that's it for me. Anything else for the good of the order tonight? Before we take a little break here. All right. We'll take a little break. We'll be back at seven. Uh, see you about nine minutes.